He is moving forward and not putting her cell phone on hold.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I know we're going to get started in a minute, but I do want to say something to Mr. James, since I see that you're on here, is that since you said there's a storm every year at the annual meeting, I'm going to consider this it. And then on March 9th, we're going to have great weather.
Yeah, that's where Randy found it earlier.
You're on, Peter. Sorry, we're having audio problems.
I think, I think Peter is muted.
If you're muted, I think we're okay. Maybe.
No, he was just reminding me that we always have a storm at our annual meeting time. So I'm going to consider this it, where nobody really has to drive out and vote or anything. So it'll be beautiful weather on March 9th. We'll give it another minute or so before we get started. Thanks to everybody that's joined us so far. Kristin or Jody, do you, do you folks have anyone other than, than you guys there with you?
Okay.
And it's not letting me move Peter back for some reason. Maybe I'll just give it a minute.
All right. Okay. So. We are going to go ahead and we're going to get started. We're going to call the meeting to, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our first part of the meeting tonight will be the hearing for the playground bond. So I'm going to call the playground bond hearing to order at 6:32. And very quickly, I'm just going to go over our emergency meeting regulations for how we're holding this meeting tonight. So folks are probably aware, we are holding the meeting over Zoom. And you've joined us here. We do have a location available for folks who may not have a connection at the GVS Gymnasium. But as the Chair of the Grantham School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, Pursue It to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. We do have a location at the GVS Gymnasium for folks who may not have connectivity. In accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. And we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of this board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing of the phone number or visiting the link that's located at www.gvshawks.org. The login information is located at that website. We are providing, we did provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the GVS Board at www.gvshawks.org. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert this public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with access, they can call 603-863-9689. And in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. We don't plan that there will, this is because this is the, the public information session, we don't plan any votes to be taken. But if there were any votes to be taken by the public body, they would be done so by a roll call vote. And additional information about the emergency orders can be found by referencing New Hampshire House Bill 1129 and emergency order number 83. So specific information regarding annual meetings and voting pertaining to this particular event can be found by referencing House Bill 1129 or the governor's emergency order number 83. Okay, so we'll begin and by opening the public hearing for the playground bond. And the way that tonight is going to work, very similar to our, our typical annual meeting. And thank you all for your patience and for being with us as we navigate this new method of doing our, our annual meeting in a way that we're available to be safe and inclusive for all of our community members. Similar to how we run our annual meeting, we will be presenting and reviewing various, the bonds and the various warrant articles. And after those things are presented, there will be a, a section for public comment to be taken. And that public comment, the, the public comments, the information regarding how to go about providing the public comment, we will go over as we bring up each of those public comment sessions. So before we start, we will review the issue at hand either through a presentation or through comments from one of the members of the board or the administrative team. And then as we open public comment, the rules for that public comment period will be refreshed for everyone. So our first issue tonight is the playground bond. And so I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Leggett to review our, the, for presentation about the playground bond. And then we will be opening up the playground bond issue for public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to take one minute to share my screen. Okay, I want to make sure everybody can see that all right. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go into the public hearing and I'm going to present the basic information about the GVS Playground Bond Issue. This is the official bond hearing. Just to read the entire warrant article, which will be Article 2, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the renovation of the Grantham Village School Playground, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $500,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $12,500 for the first year's interest payment on the bond, recommended by the Grantham School Board. And as a bond issue this year on the warrant, a three fifths ballot vote of approval is required for this to pass. I just want to go over briefly some pros and cons of the bond article for the GVS Playground Project. The biggest thing right now in terms of putting this bond forward to the public, it would be taking advantage of the low interest rates. It's currently for a five-year bond, we would be able to have an interest rate somewhere around 1 to 1.25% is what we're estimating. So this would be a, in terms of fiscal responsibility, this would be a way to get this bond with these low interest rates as opposed to waiting to see what future interest rates would bring. Especially because of COVID this year, we know now more than ever that we need a playground for all seasons. There are far too many days where our playground is closed to students and, and staff who supervise them because it turns into ice because of major drainage issues. And this has been a problem for quite a few years. We believe that this project is inevitable. It's going to happen sometime. So again, the question would be, is now the right time? And again, with the interest rates, that would be one reason as a pro for this being the right time. Securing this funding would allow us to proceed with a partner and start designing with construction to occur in summer of 2022. So whenever this project does get approved, we would be looking at about a year and a half out for construction to begin. Obviously, with construction happening in the summer when school isn't in session. This will give us control over the costs from the very beginning of the design. And it would give the community another year to match our fundraising goal of 50,000. We've currently already raised about 30,000 from grants, donations, and fundraising efforts. And putting, the board did, did have a lot of discussion at the public hearing about whether or not they would put this bond article out this year. And the belief is that, you know, the interest rates make it conducive to try this. And this putting it out there will leave it up to the will of the voters to decide if this is the right time. Some of the drawbacks of the bond are that this is, yes, an additional five-year commitment to our taxpayers. We do have some uncertainty of state revenues for education funding. If any of you have been following the legislation lately, there's, there is a little bit more uncertainty than usual about what kind of revenues we'll be getting from the state for funding. And our current bond for the GVS renovation still has eight more years on it. So this would put two bonds on the school district. And those are the main drawbacks of doing this right now. The total amount of the bond requested is $500,000. For a five-year bond, the principal plus the estimated 1.25% interest, the total cost would be $528,125. The end of the loan would be August 15th, 2026. And the yearly payment for the district would be $105,625. In terms of the tax impact, since we would have to raise the interest payment for the first year of 12,500, there would be a two cent per thousand tax impact for the first year, or $2 on every $100,000 of home value. And then in the final years, two through six, it would be a 20 cent per thousand tax impact, or $20 for every $100,000 of home value over those five years of payment. I wanted to give everybody a picture of our current bond, which is in blue. If you look at the blue, this is the current GVS bond. And the last payment over here you would see would be in the year 2029. And adding the playground bond would be the orange. And these would be the additional payments. So the additional responsibility of taxpayers over the next five years. And you can see that the payment just gets, it's a short bond. So the payment decreases just a little bit each year. The main questions that I get about the playground bond issue is, the first one is, how can a playground cost this much? And the biggest answer to that is, the majority of issues require site work. So we would be talking about what would happen with the septic system. We would have major drainage, design and landscape architect, design work and engineering that would have to go on to make sure that we don't wind up with the same problem that we have now where there are too many icy areas where it's unusable. There are underground tanks that we have to deal with. So if we're talking about just a playground, when people think of a playground, they think of buying new equipment and putting it on there. This is absolutely not what this project is. This is a pretty significant engineering and site work project. And in fact, the equipment is probably the, the least expensive part of the whole thing, whatever that equipment may be. The next question I get a lot is, why don't we wait until we have a design and a plan completed? So we have already put out both an RFP, a press for proposal, and an RFQ, a request for qualifications for a landscape architect. We've got zero responses for both of those. When I followed up with some local people about why they did not bid on that, the biggest answer was that there was little interest in signing on to something like this when the school didn't have any guaranteed of, guarantee of secured funding. So I think Brittany put it last time that there's sort of a chicken and an egg syndrome. But we are going to have much, much better success in controlling costs in the design if we've secured funding and we can have a landscape architect who's working within our parameters the entire time. And the, the third main question that I get is, what happens if the project comes in lower than what we've issued a bond for? And all of these funds must be used only for the GVS Playground Project. Any amount not used for the project will simply be allocated as revenue to pay off the bond. So if for some reason, anything comes in lower than what we've expected, we don't get to spend that money on anything else. That just means that we wouldn't have to add that amount, whatever that amount is, into what we raise and appropriate in taxes each year. Other sources of funding, we're going to continue, of course, our fundraising efforts all through next year. We have set a goal of raising an additional 20,000, but we wouldn't stop there. We would continue going. We will continue to seek donations. And then grant writing, grant writing is most likely successful once we have a design. Most grants for projects like this rely on something that's matching or very specific equipment or specific features of the playground. And we don't have any of those right now. So it's difficult to write a grant for, for something that we don't have the actual, you know, parameters and specs in place yet. So we will have a lot more luck with grant writing once we have that in place. And all of these things will offset the bond cost to increase the revenue side of things. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So just to let folks know how we will work tonight and how we'll do our first example of how the public comment will work tonight, just as we would during an annual meeting or during a board meeting, if you would like to make a public comment, we do ask that all public comments include your name, your full name, and your street address where you live here in Grantham. And so we do ask that any comments that would like to be read or made into the record tonight, you will include your name and your address in those. You are welcome to type comments or questions into the Q and A or chat feature here, as long as they include your name and address, we'll be able to read those. And if you would like to be brought in to have microphone access to be able to, to speak your question, you can do that as well. You can raise your hand. And we, we have several folks who are monitoring the Q and A, the chat, and the hand raised, raised hands of participants so that we can bring folks in. We will ask folks to limit comments to three minutes. And we will ask that you, if you, once you have spoken or made a comment once, that you wait and we allow others to speak or comment before having a second comment. And depending on our timing, we would possibly be able to open that up for additional comments from folks. So tonight, we're really focusing this part of our hearing on this playground bond. So if folks do have questions or comments that they would like to make at this point, now is the time to do that. And then just, and we'll talk about this more as we get through the meeting as well. But just so folks know the process from here, all of these comments and questions tonight will be organized and brought forward to the second information session that's happening later on before the voting takes place in March.
Brittany, I'm going to be starting to organize the, the comments right now. So we, I did want to remind people, we do have a couple of things in chat where people have not given the name and address. So if you have something in there, if you could please do that, that'll help us make sure we can do this efficiently. The first one is coming from David Wood, 103 Round the Lake Road in Grantham. Is there an alternative location for the playground that would not require the septic and tank work? Basically, we have looked into other spaces and the, the existing space next to the school is going to be our best option. The only other options would be going up the hill into the woods or to wetlands on the other side. And neither of those would be viable options for us. So we have determined that we need to use the space that is currently allocated for the playground. Then we have in the chat. I see some questions, but again, we don't have a name and address.
Okay. And we do have one hand, couple of hands up.
Okay. Let's go to the hands first and. Okay. Joel Hutchins, I'm going to move you in to speak. And as soon as you unmute, you are free to make your comment. If you could just please give your name and address.
You also have a time limit of three minutes.
Okay, sorry, I tried to unmute. So I'm slow on time. Okay, so the septic system and the drainage is the issue, correct?
It's mostly the drainage. We don't know exactly what has to be done with the septic because that's going to be up to the engineers.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that. Who is engineering this project?
Ma'am. Again, we don't know because we're trying to secure funding to put out an RFQ for qualifications.
Okay, miss. And since I'm on limited time, may I, I did some research, you know, because the weather's been so nice lately. Adventure, they are a, you know, commercial playground type company. Game Time is also on. AAA State of Play is also on. And their prediction is, what they say is $1,000 per child per use. How many children do we have at the Grantham Village School at this point?
247.
All right. Now, using that, and every one of these guys recommend that that's your starting point. Okay, that's your starting point. So in other words, does this bond, does this, are we replacing the septic system for the entire school?
We don't know yet, again, what exactly has to be done. We do know that with the tanks, the system, the drainage, that it will require significant site work.
I understand that. But is, has anybody done the research where all three of these parents said $1,000 per child per use, like on the playground, is a great starting point? We have 272 children at the Grantham Village School. So that's $272,000, right?
Well, it's, it's $247,000. And that, those are about the numbers that I get from companies too. But those don't include site work.
I understand, ma'am. I, you know, that, that, I totally understand that. But are we looking at like a, a projection of the children at the school are going to increase? I mean, I don't understand how all three of these companies say $1,000 per child per, on the playground is the projected of this. So at this time, we are looking to ask the taxpayers of the town who've just been through a pandemic to add almost $250,000 in this proposal at this time? I, I, the numbers, you know, I'm not being, you know, confrontational, but the numbers make no sense to me. They've also said, I understand. They've also spoke out, AAA has spoke out, AAA State of Play, they're very big commercial, right, playground makers. They said the average cost, okay, of a five to 12 elementary school playground is between $50,000 and $100,000. I'm just saying, at this point of time, after what everybody has gone through, the parents of these children, to ask the taxpayers to pay, I mean, we're on the hook for $500,000 at this time, it seems, if there's a problem with the septic system, absolutely needs to be addressed. But to include another $250,000 on a playground, just seems that this time, it's ludicrous. It's, it, it just, in my opinion, couldn't it wait?
And your time is up.
Yeah, I knew it would be.
Okay, let's go to the next hand. Thank you very much, Mr. Hutchins.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say thank you. And I, I will say at a previous meeting, one of the considerations that the board made was that putting this forward in this method by, as a bond with that three fifths vote needed, would let us see and know, do the taxpayers of Grantham feel that this is an appropriate project at this time? So that was some of the decision making of bringing this item forward in this manner right now. And I, we really appreciate that comment.
All right, moving over, Mr. James, Peter James. I think, Peter, you're breaking up a little bit. I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can, is any, is everybody having trouble hearing as well?
All right, is that better?
Oh, that's much better. You're there.
Okay. All right. I switched microphones. I want everybody to be aware of the fact that the town is also asking for two $500,000 bond issues this year. One of them is to make major repairs to Millipon Road, which is the biggest money pit that the town government has right now. It's a huge maintenance problem. And in the spring becomes almost impassable. The other one, which is something that I have been involved with, I am not a member of the fire department, but I was asked to be on a fire truck study committee. And we have come up with a proposal. We've gone out for bids, and we've had bids received and have studied them. And this is to replace a truck that was purchased in the year 2000. It's now 21 years old and only partially functioning. It, it has several things that it can't do, and it is severely affecting the way the fire department operations have to work. And it needs to be replaced. The total cost of that project is about $675,000, of which a large part of that is going to come from the capital reserve fund, which we've been putting aside. But $500,000, so that comes from a bond issue. So when we were voting on these issues, we have three $500,000 bond issues. All I'm asking is that if you decide we need all three, then vote for all three. If you decide you only need two, then you need to pick the two which are most important. And if you're only going to vote on one, I would ask that you'd consider the fire truck. It really has hampered the way the fire department operates. And, you know, I don't want to make idle threats, but, you know, having a functioning fire department is really critical. And so if you're going to vote for three, fine, two, make a decision. One, please vote for the fire truck. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one we have is from Jeff Roundsville, 31 Hummingbird Hill. Where did the $500,000 estimate originate? Well, it actually came from one of our first comments where a general estimate from people who do this for a living, the playground companies, is that they do estimate about $1,000 per child. That would give us about $250,000. But they, they don't include site work when they're doing that estimate. So we added the site work in there to come up with the figure. So we added the site work in there to come up with the figure that we're looking at. We had three different landscape architects do walkarounds when the RFPs and RFQs were out. So we got some ballpark figures from them of what they were thinking the site would take. And in addition, we looked at some other local playgrounds that were some of the style of playground that we're talking about, which is a playground that needs to one, be designed more as a natural playground, which is what our community survey recommended and that would deal with drainage. I know that that is sort of a in a different, different kind of concept and if, if Brittany, if you're okay with it, I pulled up a couple of pictures that might explain it a little bit better. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna switch gears for one second because I have two different presentations, so. Going to share the screen. And when we're talking about want to make sure I get to the right slide. Okay, so it's slide number 24. Okay, so when we're talking about this, we want to combine drainage fix with the landscape kind of design that we're talking with the playground. So I pulled up some examples of the kind of things that that might look like. Where we would actually be doing the site work that would be sort of constructing things like hills. This stairway around the rocks here would be what the kids would have for climbing, you know, as opposed to sort of like putting up a traditional jungle gym, but it also helps with the drainage problem. And then this would be landscapes to try and, and have that kind of aspect where we can have a slide and then also sledding in the winter. Here's another example where people, this landscape architect built it into a hill this way. And you can see this is kind of like somebody would see this kind of drainage and retaining walls. But they turned it into the kind of climbing structure that would be more of a natural playground for kids. Another example here, again, the building of the hill with the slides over here, but then sort of like they have a cave tunnel over here and some of the rocks. And then this is another view of that same playground where the hill is worked into a climbing wall. And then the slides and some of the drainage are incorporated over here. So I know it's not that our playground, when it does happen, might not look exactly like that, but I thought having a few visuals might help people be able to see this concept of using the landscape design to have the playground that we need, the access that we need, and also fix our drainage issues. So that was sort of a longer answer to where the $500,000 estimate came from. But it did come from that ballpark figure that the playground companies give out, plus the site work and then looking at other local playgrounds. And the next is Jerry Volpe, 3 Pinehurst Drive. I want the board and community to know that I'm very much in support of this bond issue. Serving as a member of the playground committee, I know we have looked at this from a number of angles and this is our best, best path forward. Some of the site work will be required regardless, if I'm not mistaken. So the sooner we move forward on funding, the sooner we can address the needs and prep for the actual new play structure. Thank you. We have Lori McClory, 38 Brookridge Drive. Please make sure people know that the vote on the town warrant articles is in May. It will not be the same day as the school bond vote. Thank you Lori for that reminder. The town meeting is May 15th. So those warrant articles that Mr. James was discussing will be up for vote in May 15th. Okay, now going back, I think we have another Q and A. David Cecil, 279 Stalker Pond Road. What difference will the drainage work make in the wintertime? And again, as with some of those images that we looked at, the drainage, we would hopefully be able to have some drainage so that we basically don't create a skating rink. Which is, we don't have the good kind of skating rink. What we do is we have we have drainage that just, it has no place to go whatsoever. And so it just stays there. We have our teachers who are going out on they were yak tracks, I believe, still Mrs. Reed, right, on the days where we can try and go out just to make sure that everybody's safe, but there are far too many days where we do have to completely close the playground from use due to safety reasons. Just a few other things to consider with the playground is that right now in terms of our playground as it is and the equipment is that we do not have what a school would consider sufficient ADA access for students with disabilities and that would be part of the design as well. Let me see. I can't tell Mr. James if you wanted to speak again or if your hand is just still up. Okay. And I want to see if anything else came in. I do want to remind everybody, if you put something in chat, we need your name and address.
And we'll give it another minute just to see if we have any other comments through, come through chat or Q and A. And just a reminder that any comments that are made tonight or that come in between now and the next the next information session, those will be summarized at the second information session, including the information regarding the playground bond.
We do have one coming in, Jeff Roundsville, what if the cost exceed $500,000? The total that we would have, including with what we're fundraising, it would actually be a total of $600,000. The project would not go over that, which is part of the advantage of securing the costs upfront so we can control it. If for any reason, something major had to happen, which I really can't imagine. I would hope not that we could try and stage out what would be the priorities and then go back to what could be done at a later time. But I'm hoping that that wouldn't happen. We have Cindy Koval, 95 Jericho Road. When does this bond come up for vote in March? Yes. This bond will be one of the two alternative ballots that you'll be voting on on March 9th. Welcome.
Okay. Just gonna double check here and thank you everyone for your comments and questions about the playground bond. We appreciate it. Oh, it looks like we have one more.
Liz Borger, 14 Beaver Falls Glen, what fundraising has been done? We received a donation from the Dorothy Byrne Foundation for $25,000 and then we've raised $5,000 in various small fundraisers that we did at GBS. Things like coin drives and that, and things of that nature. And we had, I mean, the playground committee felt that it was important that they match the $50,000 that was initially approved in the warrant article. So that's the 30 out of 50 that we would hope to raise. The board and playground committee did realize that continuing fundraising right now during COVID was not the right thing to do. So all fundraising has been on hold for this past year. And again, we hope that things are better with COVID and our economy and everybody getting back to work where we could pick up fundraising efforts again next year. We have Nicole Mason, 464 Burpee Hill Road. How old is the current playground equipment and when would it need to be replaced even if the site work didn't need to be done? I don't know the exact year. Maybe somebody who's been at GBS longer than I have will remember the exact year. But we would probably need to replace certain sections of it, just in terms of ADA compliance and some areas that are getting that Primax, our risk and our risk management company has advised us to change. So it would just be if we needed to just work on the current playground, it would just be doing things piecemeal like that. This is Cynthia Koval again. She had already given her address. So are you anticipating any additional work over the next five years that needs to be done to the building or the property? We have the one bigger project that we're looking at in terms of capital improvement. We're not exactly sure if it is within the next five years, but we anticipate that we will need to save some funding either in our repair and maintenance trust or add into the budget. The repointing of the exterior bricks of GBS. That would be the biggest thing that we would be looking at. And other than that, the building is in excellent shape. And we've had a few projects over the last few years that have helped all of our systems to work together in a, in a much more efficient fashion. So that would be the biggest thing that's coming in the near future. Oh, Liz has the year, 2006 is when the playground equipment was the, the equipment that's there now was placed there. David Wood, 103 Round the Lake, would you give us some specifics why the playground cannot be located up the hill in the forest? Secondly, where is the septic located? So the septic, exactly where it's located, I would have to look at the plans and I can get you that question at another time and I will be happy to follow up with you about the exact location of it. The playground being located up the hill in the forest would from every landscape architect who did come look at the site, it would just be cumbersome. We would be clear cutting. We would have a playground on a hill or we would have to flatten it. In addition, the kids would have to go across the road in the parking lot instead of having direct access to and from school. So there would be a, a significant safety issue.
Okay, all right, we will. We just had one other comment here, Lynn Hill Bright Slope. Only the red and gold plastic climbing pieces were added in 2006. The original equipment is much older. And there, there are a variety of pieces out there that have been added over the years. So there is some, probably some, a variety of a timeline on there, but we're looking at at least you know, 14, 15 years old for some of it. So okay, so thank you everyone and we'll just give it another second here. And just give it one more second. It looks like we may have one more comment or question come in. We'll see if that comes through.
Okay, I think what we, we don't know if we need to move the septic system. That's going to be up to the landscape architect and all the engineering. But we do know that, that it's there and that it would likely affect the drainage issues.
Okay, and we'll talk, like I said, we'll talk more about ways, procedures for additional feedback, but if folks do have additional feedback they'd like to give on this playground bond issue. You can follow the same procedures that we'll talk about towards the end of the meeting tonight. There'll be contact information located on the annual, the 2021 annual meeting portion of the GBS website where you can link through to an email address to provide additional comments or feedback. So at this point, it is now 7:12 and I'm going to close the public hearing for the playground bond issue. And I'm going to turn our annual meeting information session over to our district moderator, Carl Hansen. And Carl, I wore my sweater vest. I didn't even know we were going to match tonight, so.
Okay. Lovely to be here in these unusual circumstances. My name is Carl Hansen. I'm the moderator of the Grantham School District. I hope you can all hear me. Pursuant to House Bill 1129, we have a rather different procedure this year. I would like to take a moment and just thank the school for all of the hard, hard work that they have been putting in this last year. Most of my contact is through Dr. Leggett and I know that she has done just a ton of work trying to arrange and figure out what the procedures need to be with respect to, to our school district meeting. And I also think of the teachers and I particularly think of all the kids. And what a difficult time they've had this year, you know, we, we kind of expect them to develop relationships with their peers and to grow, grow and thrive and develop as we want kids to develop. And it's, it's been a it's been a difficult time for everyone, I'm sure. And, and my kids aren't even home, so I don't really know it firsthand, so. With respect to procedures, we're going to go through the warrant, article by article. And you will have an opportunity to comment. Either through the Q and A or the chat. Please identify your name and your address. When you do so, you can also raise your hand. And you will be able to, to speak to us or speak to the panelists here directly and everyone will be, will be able to hear your, your comments and questions. Once the school board has received input, they will then move to modify and eventually finalize the, the warrant, which will then be voted on on March 9th pursuant to the procedures which have been outlined in the, in the email, the in-person voting for, for March 9th. And I would commend that document to you. I think it's clear. But I'm not going to go through the entire process because it's quite complicated and I would probably just confuse confuse you if I tried to explain it. So the, the first article on the warrant, of course, is going to be Article 1. To hear the reports of agents, committees and other officers heretofore chosen and to pass any vote relating there to. This is a required warrant and I don't think it merits any discussion. It's not going to be changed, so we can move right on to Article 2, which is what we just finished discussing with the public hearing for the bond vote.
Carl, I'll just pull those up for everybody.
Yeah.
There's Article 1.
Okay.
And Article 2.
So Article 2, I will read it again. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the renovation of the Grantham Village School Playground and to authorize the issuance of not more than $500,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33. And to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon and to further
Sorry, I made it bigger.
Further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $12,500 for the first year's interest payment on the bond. So I feel like we've already discussed this, but are there, are there any further comments or suggestions about how you would like to see the article warrant modified? I'm not, I'm not seeing anything in chat or Q and A. I'm not, I'm not seeing anything in chat or Q and A. Where are we? Here we go.
I think, is Carl muted? And Carl, you are muted.
You did?
I think we lost you just as you started reading the third article. So.
Okay. I'm going to start over again with the third article. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $10,291,101 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents and for the payment for the statutory obligations of the district. And to authorize the application against appropriations of such sums as are estimated to be received from state and federal governments, together with other income, the balance to be raised by taxation by the school district. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately recommended by the school, by the Grantham School Board. And with that, I will recognize.
I think we're up with Jody.
Jody. To speak to that.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a minute to introduce our board. So if you could just wave when I introduce you. Our school board chair, Brittany Pie. I am the vice chair, Jody Puljasic. School Board Secretary, Christine Conroy. School Board Member Denise Sullivan. And School Board Member Leslie Nesbit. I'd like to introduce you to our administrative team. Sydney is every, I know not everyone's on the screen, but everyone is in the chat or.
Yes, I do.
Well, I think almost everyone is here tonight. So we have Sydney Leggett, our superintendent. Kristen Reed, our associate principal.
Principal.
Randy Britton, our technology director. I don't believe Randy is here at this time. But if there are, oh, he is here. Wonderful. Madeline Crudrow Burke, she's our special education director. Karen Lessard, our business administrator, she is on the screen. Scott Taylor, our facilities director. And Brenda Malloy, SAU administrative assistant. And now I believe it goes over to Brittany.
Thank you. All right. So we'll get right into the numbers of this article of the operating budget for the district. So this year, our goal as a district was to keep things as steady as possible. Knowing that we have upcoming economic uncertainty and also an uncertainty of what the incoming funding sources for revenue from the state and federal governments will be. This has been a year unlike any other for us and a budget season unlike any other in terms of trying to predict out what those budget needs will be. And so our proposed operating budget is up. The dollar amount that it is up is reflected on the screen, the $277,287, which is an increase of 2.77% from the fiscal year 21. So the increase, and we'll get into a little farther along in the board's presentation, we'll get into a little bit more of what, what constitutes that increase and what some of the fixed increases were and how we looked to offset some of those in the budget. Our estimated tax rate will be at $16.04 per $1,000. So it represents 39 cents more than fiscal year 21. And this would change to $16.02 if the playground bond does not pass for this year. So you do see that two cents of the initial, the first year that was reflected in the bond, the playground bond presentation. And I do just want to mark this and note any folks who came to the budget hearing that we did, we really appreciate some feedback that we received from that hearing. And one of the reasons we do that hearing before we come here into this meeting is to make sure that we have all of our numbers correct. And that we are able to present all of the information accurately. And so you will see that the numbers here on this screen in this slide are a little bit different than what we presented. Because we were able to fix some small changes and some mistakes that were made from that presentation. And so we do want to just acknowledge and recognize that if you were at that budget hearing, which is, we like to refer to as our dress rehearsal or our test drive for tonight. We were able to correct some information that we had incorrect here. So the estimated tax rate again will be $16.04 per 1,000. And that does include the two cents of the playground bond. Okay, we can go to the next one. So for home comparison from the fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22. So the fall tax rate was set at $15.65. So $1,565 per every $100,000 of home value. And the estimated tax rate for the, the budget we are presenting would be 1604. So $1,604 for every $100,000 of home value. So the anticipated increase of $39 per $100,000 of home value. So specific, let's see. So I think I'm turning this now over to.
Leslie.
Leslie. Yes. So I will turn this, the over to Leslie.
Thanks, Brittany. So look at some of the budget changes to get underneath where the increase is coming from. Some of this is out of our control. For example, the 127,000, almost 128,000 guaranteed maximum rate for health and dental insurance for our employees within the district. That's a guaranteed maximum rate. It might come in lower, but that's what we need to budget for. There's a mandatory New Hampshire retirement increase about approximately 3%, which adds up to almost $88,000 increase. And then we anticipate approximately 166,630 in tuition based on our actual student numbers in LMS and LHS with an additional one in the high school and one in the middle school. Given the increases in enrollment that we've seen this year, we thought it was prudent to budget for at least one over in the high school and the middle school. So tuition is going up to some degree. So that adds up to 382,535, just with those three that really are not discretionary line items. It's already 112,000 plus over the 277,287 total increase. This demonstrates that we've already cut in many other places in the budget to minimize the impact of these large requirements. And we went through the budget very carefully over the last few months. Yeah, you can advance the slide if you'd like, Sydney. So with this changes that we are also proposing with a smaller budget impact, but we feel are very important at this time. An additional $8,000 for an updated student information system. That's my dog jangling in the back. I'm sorry about that. It's very itchy. Additional 8,000 for an updated student information system, which will significantly help to streamline communications within the school. For any parents who are listening in, we'll be able to do online registration and finally liberate from paper to a large degree. So that's a big, a big improvement among a lot of other things. And we've budgeted for about $5,000 in contract expenses to further develop and improve our current website. As most of you know, it could really use some improvements in user experience navigation. And it will really help us communicate better, not only within the districts with parents and students and teachers and whatnot, but within our larger community and also bring us into better compliance with ADA. And so given our virtual lives these days, we felt that was also very prudent and timely to spend some money to update our website. Additionally, we're budgeting for about 3,800 for copying, copier and printing technology for environmental awareness. This is a software package and some hardware tools that will help us within the district to save quite a bit of money on our copying and printing expenses. Not only is it good for the environment in terms of saving us paper, but we average about $5,000 a year in overage charges. And so this will just pay for itself rather quickly and seems like a win-win on a lot of fronts. And lastly, we're budgeting for about $12,000 for the purchase of a snow plow and snow blower. That will help us make better use of the back bus loop, help us clear snow more efficiently. Scott has been wonderfully and, and limping along our current equipment, but has been warning us for all of my three years that this is coming. And so $12,000, it seems quite timely and important. You can advance the slide. I think I, I'm turning it over.
Turning it over to Denise.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. So this is just a brief review of, of Grantham Village School Academics. And I, I'm just so impressed with what we've seen in our community. The school has successfully navigated the pandemic, balancing the health and safety issues with the educational needs of our students. So currently in our four days in one day remote model since November 3rd, there have only been two days of quarantine for only one grade level. A more complete review, excuse me, I have dogs in the room. A more complete review of data will be presented at the March 1st board meeting, but at a glance. GVS students are averaging above the norm on the NWEA assessment by 10 points in reading. And five points by five points in math. Growth has occurred in nine out of 10 areas assessed. No loss, but one area just stayed the same. Typical GVS annual growth within three points has occurred in five out of eight areas assessed. And we continue to dive into the data to see where we still need to improve as always. So on the next slide, which is, I think what we've all been so amazed with, how did this happen? In a time of uncertainties, we certainly have so many people to be grateful and thankful to. Dedication of the GVS educators who have worked harder than ever to do whatever, whatever we needed them to do, whatever their students needed, no matter what model we're in, whether we're remote, hybrid or four days in. Parents and guardians and caregivers who ensured that their children had a good place to work. And that they stayed on top of assignments, helping wherever and however they were needed. And the whole community of Grantham that obviously took care of each other and did what needed to be done to keep COVID-19 under control, which resulted in more in-person time for all of GVS. As we look at other communities, some were not so fortunate. I think this is just a reflection on how seriously people have taken this and worked hard to keep it contained. Excuse me. Okay. So next slide, please. We have an emphasis on social. She didn't do this all night until it was my turn. I'm sorry. This year's emphasis has been on social and emotional learning. For all students, academics are only one part of what we need to look at and how this pandemic has affected our children. Social, emotional learning will become more integral and intentional curriculum from this year on. And our many thanks go to Denise Buckman for leading GVS in this work. So again, thank you all. And we're proud of our students.
Hey Carl, do you want me to moderate the comments?
So there's, there's the article. Are there any questions or, or comments? Remembering that the, the board will take into consideration comments and questions that are made today and they will update and correct the, the warrant so that it can be finalized next week in order to be ready to vote on the week after. So.
We do have something that looks to be related to the playground. David Seisel, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, 279 Stalker Pond Road, where he asked years two through six. And those are technically the five years of the bond because the first year is technically just the 12,500 for the first year of interest. So that's why it reads years two through six instead.
Any questions on the the budget warrant?
I have Lynn Hill Bright Slope. And pretty much everyone, you guys are doing a good job. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's a great comment to get. We appreciate it. Liz Borger, 14 Beaver Fells Glen. I'm wondering if addressing the drainage has been considered as a budget item if the playground bond doesn't pass. I think if it doesn't pass, the board will take, you know, whatever the next steps are into consideration. So we'll be sure to discuss that if we need to reassess everything after the March vote.
Okay.
Jerry Volpe, 3 Pinehurst Drive. I have been following at each of the last several board meetings as components of this operating budget have been discussed and put together. And I believe the board has put forth a very responsible and reasonable budget for continued success of our school. Thank you for all of your efforts to get us here.
Any other comments or questions for the, for the board regarding the warrant on Article 3? If not, I will move on to Article 4.
I'll pull that one up.
I can read it here. But it would be good to share screen too.
Here we go.
To see if the school district will vote to amend the existing Grantham-Lebanon Plainfield Authorized Regional Enrollment Agreement, also known as the Area Agreement, between the Grantham-Lebanon Plainfield School Districts, which provides for the continued education of Grantham's middle and high school students, grade seven through 12 at Lebanon Middle School and Lebanon High School. And further to approve renewal of the Area Agreement for a term of 10 years to commence on July 1, 2021 and to expire on June 30, 2031. In accordance with the proposed Area Agreement on file with the district clerk. So. Would anyone like to present Article 4? I think Christine is going to do that.
Yes. Thank you, Carl. The agreement among Grantham and Plainfield as the sending districts and Lebanon as the receiving district provides for our students attendance at Lebanon's middle and high schools. The agreement is revisited and renewed every 10 years. The 10 years erupt at the end of this school year and negotiations for renewal took place in 2020 to take effect in the 2021-22 school year. Thanks to those of you who responded to the survey the district sent out last year and who participated in discussions at our board meetings. There was strong support for continuing with the agreement. And this slide gives an overview of the major revisions. The tuition formula stands as is, and this includes a cap that's been in place on the maximum increase in any given year. Secondly, there's now a provision for a half-day tuition rate for students enrolled in fewer than three classes in a Lebanon school. Some students are now taking some of their classes elsewhere. Next, a provision for foreign exchange students was added. A couple of requests had come up within the past couple of years, and there was agreement among the districts that these students enrich the experience of the entire student body, and so it makes sense to waive tuition for them. The next point of clarification is in regard to the placement of Grantham or Plainfield students in schools other than Lebanon middle or high school. The need for an alternative placement can arise, for example, with students who have special needs that cannot be met in Lebanon. The agreement now states that these placements will be guided by state law and the policies of the State Board of Education with approval for both ascending and receiving superintendents. The cost of these placements is always borne by the sending district. Can we go to the next slide? There's revised language for procedures for special education in 504. Over time, the informal arrangements for these procedures had become inadequate for assuring that IEPs and 504 plans were being fully implemented. The new language spells out the procedures clearly. A process for resolving disputes has been clearly stated. It's a multi-step process intended to come to resolution at lower levels of administration while providing four ways to escalate issues if necessary. The agreement is for another 10 years with a provision for reopening discussion in three years. And stability is in the interest of both the sending and receiving districts. The board recommends approval of this article.
Okay, thank you, Christine. So are there any comments or questions regarding Article 4? In the area agreement? Doesn't sound like a popular subject, but.
We do have one comment coming in. Lynn Hill Bright Slope, sorry to comment again. Don't be sorry about commenting. This is, we like this, but we would be crazy not to do this. LHS is wonderful.
Okay. And there's a comment from Jerry Volpe. Thank you again for all the effort that went into this revised agreement. I know it was a big effort.
And a thank you for advocating for exchange students. And thank you for having an exchange student.
Okay, I'm not getting any other questions or about this subject, so I think we can get ready to move on to to Article 5. And Article 5, as always, is to transact any further business to come before this annual meeting. So again, I don't think that we have any discussion about modifying the warrant with respect to that article. But I will entertain any comments or questions that people have. Okay, um, at this point, I would like to recap the procedures that we're going to be following the next couple of weeks here. We encourage you to provide feedback, really at any time between now and when the warrant is finalized. You can email to input@gvshawks.org. You can call the SAU, of course, 863-9689, or you can even come into the SAU office in person. They're open from 8:30 to 5:00. All of the feedback, all of the comments that you want to submit to the board must include a full name and address. All of the feedback will be shared publicly. And it's helpful if you state which article you're providing input on. Any feedback over 100 years, I'm sorry, over 100 words will be summarized. The next information session that we have is next week, March 1, at 6:30 PM, right here on Zoom, also with availability in the GVS auditorium, or you can phone in to Zoom, or you can participate through your computer on Zoom. And then ultimately, we will get to the election on May 9, which will take place at the town hall pursuant to the procedures which have been distributed. If you have any questions or need additional documentation regarding the budget, you can request that from the SAU office. And I will close this annual meeting information session number one at this point. Unless there's anything further from the superintendent or the board, okay. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. Thanks, everybody, for doing this in a whole new way this year. All right, anything else we need to? I believe we are all set to close and conclude the meeting, correct, Sydney?
I believe so.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for coming, for provide your feedback. Please feel free to join us next week. And as just a quick reminder, tomorrow night, we do have the candidates night, candidate information night for school officers as well as town, some town positions. And what time does that one start?
That one's at 7:00 PM tomorrow.
Perfect.
Leslie knows exactly what time I saw.
7:00 PM on Zoom, so we'll see everybody back in our little squares.
Night.
Thanks, everybody.